...and fifteen regular meeting of the board of trustees, contract negotiations, attorney-client privilege, village hall renovations and reuse, uh, two personnel contract negotiations, fire department promotion.
I move.
Moved by trustee Collum?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Levinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed extensions? All right, we'll be back at eight.[19.78][19.78](bell)
Eight oh seven.
Here.
Here.
Trustee Levison.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnell.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lerner.
Here.
Mr. Rother.
Here.
Susan Caljean, present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, a couple of announcements. First is the South Orange Maplewood Baseball and Softball Parade. May 2nd at 9:00 AM sharp, the parade will depart from Ritter Field at Columbia High School and make its way down to Memorial Park. And we invite everybody to please come out, support our kids, support our teams, and it's always a great chance to see me throw a terrible first pitch. This is my last chance to do so, so that's certainly worth watching.
How's the training camp been coming along?
What's that?
The spring training camp, that definitely.
It's going really poorly, thank you. Also, a big thanks to the South Orange Police Department, the First Baptist Church, the Public Safety Committee for the first inaugural Coffee with a Cop program. I know we had an incredible turnout last week, and I don't know if we have other dates yet picked out?
Yeah, we're working on them right now, but it was wildly successful. It was a great turnout. The Maplewood Police Department came and joined us as well. So I think we're really looking forward to continuing this.
I also have to say to the South Orange Police, which had a good turnout, that the Maplewood Police Department seemed to have one or two more police officers in attendance than them. So it can have a real competitive thing going on.
But it's great, and I think it, you know, it represents, it's not only a continuation of what I think has been important to all of us on the board and all of us at the Police Department for a really long time, but especially in 2015, building trust between our Police Department and our community, extremely, extremely important. And we certainly thank our Police Department for the wonderful job that they do as part of that. Another reminder about the File of Life program, and if you, this is something we've talked about before, if you haven't taken advantage of it, please do so. As I've also said before, as a first responder, I've certainly, it's come in very handy. So if you don't have one in your home, or you know someone, even if you have perhaps a parent who lives in a different town in South Orange, it's certainly something to check and see if it's available where they might live. If you want to get one here in town, you can contact the Health Department at 973-378-7715, extension 7710. And it's just a great resource to be able to put some really important medical information in immediate, an immediate grasp of a first responder in your home or in your car, and so they can see whatever medical information they might need to at that particular point. A reminder about Container Days, Saturday Container Days, the dates, make sure to mark them down. They're all down at the Public Works Yard at 300 Walton Ave. It's May 16th, June 20th, July 25th, August 22nd, and September 26th. The hours are 8:00 AM to 1:45 PM, and make sure to bring down a form of South Orange ideas for South Orange residents. And I want to ask Trustee Collum to just give a quick thank you or cleanup on Irvington Ave.
Yes, so as you guys know, we had the Second Annual Cleanup Greenup. It used to be Irvington Avenue, but now it's Seton Village. The group brought in probably about fifty or so volunteers for plantings, beautification, special thanks to the Department of Public Works. Tommy is always amazing. The guys were there very early. The volunteers from Seton Hall University and all the restaurants donated food for all the volunteers who were helping out all day. So it was about four hours of success, and, you know, I encourage everybody, go drive down Irvington Avenue into the Seton Village corridor and see all the work that the volunteers did.
Great, and I just remember what we should also make sure to mention is, after I'm done with my shame after the baseball parade, the next day, we have some very exciting events happening in town, so I don't know, Trustee Clark, if you want to talk a little bit about River Day this year?
Yes, River Day, this Sunday, 11 to 3. The headquarters is going to be at the Skate House by the Duck Pond, so just off of Mead Street. But it is a chance to come down for a great community event. It's not just a river cleanup, it's also food, music, various exhibits, all sorts of things going on. Bring the kids, put rubber boots on them, get them out there, pick up some trash as well. So yeah, that's this Sunday, 11:00 AM is the kickoff, get there while there's still some trash to pick up. We find people who arrive too late in the afternoon often complain because there's nothing left, which is a good problem to have. So that's Sunday, 11 to 4.
All right, thank you.
Alex, before you move on, can I add one more thing?
Mm-hmm.
So along with the Coffee with a Cop, the Police Department is also now issuing the Positive Behavior citations. So for all the parents out there, law enforcement will be issuing citations to the youth that they see exhibiting positive behavior in the community. And half the ticket is redeemable for either a slice of pizza or a like-it cup at Cold Stone Creamery. The first set of booklets is about 500, and then we're going to assess and see if we want to keep it going. So the department's very excited, and special thanks to Sergeant Adrian Acevedo, who's really leading all these community relations outreach efforts.
Trustee Levison, you couldn't get that on the e-ticketing program? Thank you. All right, let's move on to our public comments. If there's anybody here who wishes to speak, if you'd like to just come up to the microphone in front of the stage there, if you could just state your name and address, and try and limit your comments to three minutes, please. Thank you.
Sure. Hi, Amy Dawn. I think most of you know me as past president of Montrose Park. Worked for many years building up that area of the village and promoting South Orange through multimedia and Montrose and May House tours, and bringing a lot of great success to that neighborhood and town. Also working to establish a local preservation commission, and I'm also currently sitting on that commission. I want to make it clear that I'm speaking personally right now, and in follow-up to attending a coffee for the elections that are upcoming. And I'm speaking about the townwide rehabilitation zone that was recently proposed via resolution. I feel that this is a broad brush stroke that paints a poor picture of South Orange and is a dangerous precedent. South Orange should not be the guinea pig for a townwide rehabilitation zone. Although there may be a few other towns in New Jersey, we have more than 550, there's probably only about three that are, and many of those are shore towns that were decimated after Sandy. South Orange has an amazing housing stock with many homes that are 50 to 100 years old. Very few properties in South Orange are derelict. Many of us have watched South Orange over the last 20 years that I've lived here, or more, and have seen the growth and enhancement of our village, as well as, for the most part, its preservation. Within this highly educated community, there has already been much discussion and controversy over this resolution. When asked at a recent coffee about the source for the resolution, Sheena Collum and Howard Levison denied that the purpose was not about restoring or renovating the village sewer system, but rather was based on a townwide survey, which they said revealed that residents felt that downtown needed rehabilitation, and where residents said they were in favor of tax abatements for home renovations. Of course, I did take that survey, and I'd like to say that those questions were not paired, as yes, I'm in favor of both of those things. What I would prefer to see is that the town take a more measured approach and consider designating rehabilitation zones to particular areas, areas that are actually in need. For example, the newly renamed Irvington Corridor, could be Seton Village, is an area that is definitely in need. And I thank you for bringing out the students and involving them. I saw them on the weekend, and it was really great to see them. There are downtown areas that may also be, perhaps Valley Street, perhaps Village Hall could be a rehab zone. Those are important. Perhaps the sewers could be established as an area that's a rehab zone. I don't know if that's ever been explored in the community. On another note, if you are, as a trustee, do not rescind this resolution, what will future buyers foresee when they learn about a townwide zone? When realtors market the area, they will include this as a tax incentive, and buyers will Google, "What is a rehabilitation zone?"
Thank you.
And when they pull that up, what they will see is that the first list of criteria, their pop-up will be that a designated area may be determined to be in need of rehab of the governing body.
Thank you.
And that, since I'm the only speaker, I would like to complete my speech.
Unfortunately, I'm not allowed to let people go past three minutes. That's a rule that-
Okay, then I'll finish, I will finish at the next public comment.
Yep, and you can, yeah, you can certainly come back up.
At the end of the meeting today.
Yeah, I will.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Sorry about that. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, so I'll close public comments, and at first, it might be worth addressing a little bit about that. I know we had posted a pretty good deal of information on the website. Mr. Lewis, I don't know if there's anything that you wanted to share from what was a pretty thorough write-up on the subject? And I don't mean to also make this as something to suggest that you can't come back up and make more comments on the subject, but it seems worth at least addressing now, especially if anybody's watching at home and curious. Unfortunately, we're not really supposed to, the way the State Open Public Meetings Act is set up is that, is my job as a presiding officer, I have to enforce the public comment period equally and fairly in every single meeting. So if I were to give you more than three minutes this meeting, someone would say, "Well, why didn't you give me more than three minutes in the last meeting?" So it puts me in an awkward position from a legal perspective, because although I wish that we could do more than that, if I allowed certain people to speak for more than the time in certain meetings and didn't allow other people to speak for more than their time in other meetings, that would be not fair to those other folks. So unfortunately, it's kind of a constraint that we operate under. I wish it were not the way that we operated, but it's not really, unfortunately, that up to us.
Yeah, so specifically, and we, the board did do a townwide rehabilitation designation, and as I indicated in the post that we put on the website, a part of that was due to some additional criteria that were inserted in the statute in an amendment, which may be reflective of why you are just now starting to see more townwide. Specifically, the criteria upon which our designation was based relates to the average age of the housing stock, as well as the average age and condition of the infrastructure, water and sewer infrastructure. Those criteria did not exist in the earlier statute and was much more site-specific. I won't speak for the legislature, but the fact that they amended the statute to include that certainly opened the door for more townwide type assessment. And I think what's important to remember is that the designation in and of itself doesn't actually do anything other than essentially recite the fact that is clearly a fact, that more than half our housing stock is over 50 years old, and that more than half of our sewer and water infrastructure is over 50 years old and in need of maintenance and repair, which those facts are essentially indisputable. The next step from here is where you get into where things actually can happen, and those involve adopting redevelopment plans for, and this is where we get into targeted areas, and the alternative would be to do multiple studies on multiple areas, which come with an expense, and certainly costs money to have the planner do multiple studies. And what we saw is an opportunity that we knew were eligible, we can take this step at very minimal expense to the taxpayers, kind of cross that threshold, knowing full well that before anything meaningful or substantive or that could actually do anything happened, it would be in connection with the adoption of a redevelopment plan, which I want to clarify that the statute uses redevelopment plan, whether you're doing redevelopment or rehabilitation, there are certainly distinctions. The rehabilitation does not permit eminent domain, has much, much more limited tax abatements, but nonetheless, the statute says it's a redevelopment plan. If you're going to do that, and you identify a particular area, be it Irvington Avenue, Valley Street that Amy mentioned, Village Hall's already in a redevelopment zone from the prior designation, so there's no need to have rehabilitation on Village Hall. But when you identify those areas, then you have to move forward with redevelopment plan, which comes with it all of the same procedural protections as a zoning ordinance, and involves introduction of an ordinance, referral to the planning board for consistency with the master plan. The planning board reports back, the Board of Trustees then acts on it in a public hearing duly noticed, and then adopts an ordinance. So it's essentially the exact same process as a zoning ordinance. You know, as it relates to, does having that townwide designation create a stigma, if you will, from a real estate perspective? I couldn't really speculate on that. I suspect that anyone that really looked into it would see what it does or doesn't mean, would see what the criteria was the basis for it. Certainly, there was no indication of blight or crime, or that everything's run down. It was simply following the statutory criteria. But again, I am not one to speculate on what impact it would or wouldn't have. I think ultimately, it will have the desire to effect of giving us flexibility and the additional controls associated with it to kind of steer rehabilitation, repairs, renovations, upgrades in the, what I think everybody acknowledges are sort of tired commercial corridors on Valley Street and Irvington Avenue principally, gives the opportunity for some additional controls on some of the more sensitive sites. I would also point out, and I'm not sure how many people knew this or didn't know this, but as it relates to tax abatements on single-family homes, we've had a program on the books for 25, almost 30 years, under essentially the same, the five-year short-term tax abatement scheme, where people could do improvements and renovations on single-family homes and get short-term tax abatement. And that's been in place, this sort of just supplements that by going beyond the single-family homes. But I think everybody here is certainly sensitive, and there's no, has never been. But at the end of the day, the governing body- end of the day, the governing body, whether it be this body or from some future body, with or without this designation, could change the zoning on anywhere, and that's just the nature of having elected officials, and then they're accountable at the ballot box, and if they do things you don't like, you vote them out of office. But, you know, so the notion that this gives some new powers or bypasses existing procedures, and again, any redevelopment plan has to go to the planning board, just the same as zoning ordinance. Any development that was going to be done pursuant to that would still have to have a site plan application, notice to people, public hearings, evidence, all the same procedural protection. So, you know, again, I think that there is a significant amount of sort of misinformation circulating about that understandably, I think, concerns people when they hear it. But again, I'm happy to discuss it, address any questions residents have, did put some stuff on the website, happy to put in more. My email's obviously on the website or call my office. And beyond that, again, this is such a preliminary step, and it's really just recognizing the two factual criteria that are indisputably true, the housing stock and the infrastructure.
Thank you. And, yep?
Can I add on to that? Yeah, so just for the other board members, too, if we circle back to what Ms. Dawn referenced as the surveying, when we began the Irvington Avenue Initiative and worked with the Market Research Center, one thing that we heard a lot from residents was kind of the disrepair of the existing buildings. We heard that from some of the business owners who were within those buildings. So when we started, I mean, overwhelming was, you know, instead of looking at redevelopment, development, what can we do as a program of rehabilitation? If you look back to our Smart Growth Plan that Susan Gruhl did from the Department of Community Affairs in the Office of Smart Growth, one of the things that was supported all the way back in 2006 was public-private partnerships to facilitate rehabilitation in the business corridor. So we've kind of heard this time and time again. It's not always about new, it's about a program of rehabilitation for what exists. So when we basically took the market research from Seaton Hall, when we were looking at our vision plan, when we were looking at prior planning documents, we brought this to our village planner to start and look at what different tools or resources were available. As you can see in the central business district, I think we've seen a lot of financial investment over the years. I think that primarily goes to the designation of redevelopment from the 1990s that provided the municipality a lot of tools to incentivize investment. Now, with rehabilitation, it is significantly less. In fact, it tends not to be controversial in many of the municipalities, because there isn't the strong arm of government. It's essentially financial incentives to try and give people, as I say, a hand up rather than a handout, and it's over the course of five years. As Mr. Lewis indicated on the website, it's 20%, 40%, 60%, 80%, 100%. And that's not on the full property, it's just on the improvement of the property itself. And basically, when speaking with our professionals and also reaching out to the Village Center Alliance, our Development Committee, to look at, you know, not just Seaton Village area, but what other areas within our business districts could benefit from a program of rehabilitation, it was Ms. Gruhl who explained that due to changes within state statutes, there's a broader brush that you could use just to get the designation, just the designation alone and qualify, and that from that, you could work out specific plans for each of the areas that you're focusing on. So as Mr. Lewis indicated, I think it was just more of a way to get the designation as a first step, and then as we move through this process, whatever area that we're in, focus. And then again, that has to be done with an ordinance or a plan brought to the governing body, sent to the planning board for consistency with the master plan, then to come back to us. So everything really rises or falls with its consistency with our master plan. So there's, you really can't go off course. And ultimately, it's such a relatively low financial incentive, I don't think you're going to be looking at anything more substantial than really a program of rehabilitation for all these buildings. And that's kind of the longer story of how we went through nine months of trying to figure out what program we could put in place to support the existing property owners and the small businesses that are within those properties.
I have a question, and the administrator, or Sheena, or village president, you can answer that. Based on what was stated, is there any aspect of this, once we get into the specifics, that would involve and engage public input?
Yeah.
And if so, is that part of the standard process? Can someone comment?
Yeah, well, no, I would say certainly the legal process, there's unquestionably opportunities for public input, and that's at the bare minimum legal process, which would be, if you identified, whether it be an area, a particular project, and you want to do a redevelopment plan, again, that's done by ordinance, there's a, you know, public hearing in front of the planning board on consistency with the master plan, there's a public hearing back before the Board of Trustees on the ordinance. And again, that's sort of the bare minimum. Certainly, at least in my experience, my three years here, sort of there's the South Orange Way, which is to go above and beyond. And I think even in the instances that we've looked at so far, there's been a deliberate effort to expand upon public input, to involve the public at the earliest possible date on potential projects, proposed projects, sometimes, you know, perhaps regret it that it was so open, but I don't think ultimately anybody regrets it, because the point being, sometimes there's a perception that by announcing, "Oh, this person approached us with this idea," that the fact that we announced it meant we agreed with it or we endorsed it, which is not the case, but that's sort of the double-edged sword of being that transparent and that upfront from the beginning and letting everyone know, is before you sort of vet it down and you carve it down. But certainly, we, you know, as a village and, you know, with the urging and support of the Board of Trustees, village president, have gone above and beyond the bare legal minimum requirements, held community forums on projects, encouraged developers to hold their own meetings, to go meet the neighbors, gone out to meet the neighbors. And so I think there's 100% a legal requirement, but above and beyond that, I am confident that we will continue to go on above and beyond that and provide plenty of opportunity for public input.
There's one more component I just wanted to add, is that within planning and zoning, we started talking about when we realized that you could get this thing called townwide, how would that impact single-family homes or areas without, outside of the commercial districts? And one thing that was interesting was what came up was, within the code right now, I believe it's chapter 144, is that this program was put into place by the state statute, I believe in the early 1990s, and I spoke to David Scheckner about that, and he said that basically there's a sunset clause, and it did already sunset. So either you can go the state statute route, or you can go under the local housing and redevelopment law to achieve the same goal. At the time being, we agreed in planning and zoning, the focus is going to be the commercial corridors, that's the primary interest of using this. But after some discussion, there is flexibility in revisiting what it would mean to offer the financial incentives in the short term for me, for people making improvements on their primary residence. But that's just not under consideration right now. And I think for a lot of folks, it was a useful tool for the 10 or so years, 15 years it was in effect, when the board adopted it in the 1990s.
Okay. Are there other comments or questions?
Well, Steve, Sheena, and Barry.
Okay. And we can certainly come back and answer any other questions or comments from any members of the public in our next public comment period, which should actually be fairly soon, considering tonight's pretty short meeting. So with that being said, let's move on to our resolutions on the consent agenda.
Resolutions 2015, motion 84 to resolutions 2015-90 proposed on the consent agenda. We did have the add-on resolution 2015-91. I don't know, Mr. Lewis, did you want to say, speak anything about that?
And the numbers, give me the numbers, which two?
The new one, 91.
90 was the proposal from GSE LLC for the water utility consulting services.
Right.
And 91 was the extending the date to award the contract for the rehabilitation.
Right. So 90, and certainly Mr. Roether can weigh in as well, and this was an oversight, it should have been within the package, there was some miscommunication, but this is a consultant associated with the assessment of the condition of our water system and evaluating our ongoing negotiations, both with New Jersey American Water for an alternate water supply, as well as our current situation with East Orange Water and what future negotiations sit there. They had provided us a proposal. One of the principals is extremely knowledgeable about the East Orange Water system and our system, having previously done work for East Orange Water relating to our system. He's an engineer, I've met with him, been very impressed. It's just, you know, certainly my recommendation, I think, the working group's recommendation of Trustee Clark and Trustee Levison, and Mr. Roether's recommendation that we bring them on board as a consultant, just...
Not only, not only that, he was actually, they were actually the licensed operator of the East Orange Water System for a number of years, before they took the system back, and extremely knowledgeable about our system, has all sorts of data that's very, very important for the ongoing evaluation of the system and what we're going to be doing with it.
Okay. I'd actually like to do 86 separately. It's okay with everybody?
I think there's also a question about 91, just...
91, and I, obviously, I'll have more of an update, but this is, we received bids for the renovation of Village Hall, and I'll have, again, a more detailed update later on, but that were received on May 5th, under the bid specifications and the state statute. There's a deadline within which to make an award of that contract within 60 days. Because of our need to adopt a bond ordinance, and we had one misstep, so we had to reintroduce it to provide additional funding, so we would even have enough funds available to accept the award, should we choose to do so. And then that is not effective until 60 days after publication. The effective date of the availability of funds would fall outside of the current deadline. The state law does allow you, with the agreement of the bidders, to extend that deadline. We did receive written acknowledgement from the bidders that they were willing to extend their, you know, they, we explained the circumstances, that we don't have the money right now because of the bond ordinance and the publication requirement. So this resolution extends that date, and again, I'll get into more detail on where we stand on that, but up through and including June 26th, to give us enough time to do that.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Just one comment. The authorization of the bond does not mean that we went out and borrowed the money, it just authorizes us.
Correct.
At some point, if we do go forward, to go out and bond for it.
Okay. So I, as mentioned, would like to do 86 separately, which is recognizing our village clerk for Municipal Clerks Week.
Okay.
And so is everybody okay with 84 through 91, not including 86?
Yes.
I move.
Almost. Okay. Moved by Trustee Collum?
No, no, I have come in on 84.
Okay.
Barry, I thought in our discussion today, you were going to pull that back, or?
Yeah, and we're still working on that, and I don't think there's that much time sensitivity. So if we can pull 2015-84, I think we're going to have some more discussion at the Finance Committee meeting. We're trying to drill down on all the actual sewer costs and set the rate at the right amount.
Thank you.
Okay, so I've got 85 through 91, minus 86, and that was moved by Trustee Collum, and seconded by Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have the roll, please?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Collum?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford? Yes. Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnau?
Yes.
Should I like to read 86 by title?
Resolution 2015-86 to recognize our village clerk for Municipal Clerks Week.
So I wanted to pull this, as we typically do with things that we just want to draw a little extra attention to. So Municipal Clerks Week is not this week, but it's the week of May 3rd, I believe, and I think that I wanted to pull this not only to recognize municipal clerks in general, but also to make sure, to give a quick hand to our clerk and our deputy clerk here for all the great work that they do. So thank you both for the... Assuming the resolution passes.
Yeah.
So with that being said...
Point of order.
Yeah. Yeah, right.
I think they're incredible.
Second. All right, moved by Trustee Rosner, seconded by Trustee Schnau. Do we have the roll, please?
Trustee Collum?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford? Absolutely Y-E-S. Trustee Levison?
Absolutely, yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Uh, yes.
Trustee Schnau?
Definitely, yes.
Trustee Clark?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to the approval of bills.
I move the bills list audited by the village treasurer, previously distributed to the Board of Trustees for their review.
Second. Okay, moved by Trustee Levison, seconded by Trustee Schnau. Can we have the roll, please?
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnau?
Yes.
Trustee Collum?
Yes.
Okay. Let's move on to our reports. I'm going to keep my report extremely short this week by saving everything for our next meeting, which will be my final meeting as village president. Save that for, we're not quite there yet, Mark.
How proud.
And that will be, yeah, exactly. I don't quite get the thanks that Susan gets. And so I'm going to have a little bit longer of a report and a little bit of a recap for our next meeting.
We appreciate the warning.
Yes. It's not going to compare to the public safety report, don't worry.
In other words, we need to get, we're going to get, we need to get eight hours?
Yes, yes.
I move to adjourn the next meeting.
So I'll just move on to Mr. Lewis with his report.
I will, unfortunately, probably not be as brief, but I'll try and be brief. Village Hall update, I touched upon it earlier relating the resolution, the circumstances surrounding the bids for the renovations, so that date has now been extended up to and including June 26th, which would then make, barring a special meeting being scheduled, our regularly scheduled second meeting in June, on June 22nd, sort of the last available date at which we need to make a decision to award, move forward with renovation. In connection with that, we are continuing to evaluate the proposals for adaptive reuse that were received. As you recall, we did an RFP soliciting interested parties who may want to come up with an alternative use for Village Hall, subject to certain conditions, the most important of which is that they would be obligated to renovate the building historically, consistent with New Jersey State Historic Preservation Office standards, and to accept the property and have placed there on a historic preservation easement that would obligate the owners and any future owners to, again, maintain the building in accordance with all the historic regulations. We have narrowed it down now to two sort of finalists, if you will, without getting into the details of the offers. They're essentially, one is a boutique hotel, the other's a restaurant. We continue to get information and have had some significant back and forth, sort of drilling down on the finances, the requirements, the parking, the use, et cetera, to ascertain, you know, what the picture of one of those uses would be. There is also in, you know, connection with that, the concern that we are looking at, and I think we'll continue to talk about, how do we, were we to approach one of those options? What does that mean for the future? What's the risk associated with one of those two uses if the business that went in there was not successful? What happens to the building? How could we best protect ourselves in that regard, whether it related to some right-of-first refusal to retake it or some other option, but certainly sensitive to that. One of the, you know, I think the key things that the public and the taxpayers in particular should be aware of, you know, as we approach this, it is certainly not lightly and is certainly not without, I think, a certain amount of reverence to the fact that as Village Hall and its historic use and meaning to the village, I think that's why it was so critical that we required that if anyone went in there, they'd have to keep it looking the way it looked, because it is so iconic. But at the same time, it is, and, you know, as important as it is, the decision of the $5.6 million to spend on renovating it, that is only a smaller part of a bigger picture relating to all our facilities and sort of a long-term plan of where we go, because in addition to the potential $5.6 million to spend on Village Hall, we've recently completed an analysis of the police department and received a cost estimate that's almost as high, just shy of $5 million. We've recently authorized an assessment of the Baird Building, which is, if you can imagine, probably in the worst shape of all of them, and is bigger than all of them. So, you know, realistically, we're anticipating a number coming back, you know, potentially higher than Village Hall. You know, so you're very quickly over $15 million in potential expenditures for, you know, essentially our neglected resources, our neglected buildings. In hindsight, you certainly wish they'd been better maintained over all the years, but we inherited what we inherited, and we have to, you know, make the best decision, recognizing sort of the historic significance of some of these buildings. I don't think the police department falls in that category, but there's certainly an affinity for Baird and some historic component, and obviously Village Hall. But how do we best balance, you know, what the impact of that level of expenditure would be on the taxpayers? be on the taxpayers versus what are our real core functional needs, and what do you need, you know, to just house your offices and where can they be housed? So, you know, all I can say is certainly administratively and as far as the board, village president, we're moving forward, you know, very deliberately sensitive to the importance of these different facilities, but at the same time, realistic about the financial impact and, you know, we're already, and I've said it repeatedly, have certainly more debt that I'm comfortable with. We've made great strides in kind of reversing the trend of the escalating debt and bringing that down, you know, but the prospect of tacking out another fifteen-plus million on top of it is certainly of concern to me in terms of long-term, you know, fiscal viability and the impact on the taxpayer. So, you know, that's where we stand. We, you know, I think, obviously, we have certain time limits. The extension on the bid date is what it is, so we're now, where we're looking literally right at about sixty days or less that we have to make a decision. So we will do everything we can to put together as much information on all the different options, the long-term financial projections, impacts on the taxpayers, et cetera, and certainly then, you know, as is always the case, this will be, I'm sure, the subject of ample public discussion. I envision probably at least one special meeting devoted to nothing but this, which will again be a public meeting, but that's sort of where we stand right now on that. So what apropos, when I talk about our financial constraints is the next subject, is our road and capital update. We did recently, earlier this year, adopt one ordinance that did appropriate, and it's in the process of being made legally available, that I talked about earlier, additional funding to fund the Village Hall project. But we also still have to deal with our day-to-day business and our capital needs and particularly our roadways. We've all been, and I know you were all copied on, and I've certainly been up there to see it firsthand, we have a number of roads that are, you know, in very poor condition. It was a very rough winter, they're worse than they were last year. Many of them had sort of accelerated deterioration worse than would have normally been projected. Some of the worst are up in the North Newstead area, Mountain Crestwood, Northwoods, Great Hills, Brentwood, Longview. Those are ones that were on the list, they were, the way the list went, if you will, is based on condition. If anything, they've gotten worse, but they were already so up close to the top of the list to begin with, that they're getting that much worse, that much quicker, only expedited the need to try and address them. We are not yet settled on, I did provide you with some materials earlier today, with some estimates that we got, with an opportunity to address those roads, in addition to some of the currently slated projects on Terrell, which we kind of have to move on because there's a NJDOT grant that has deadlines associated with it. Also still in the mix are Blanchard and Crest. Tolu needs to be done, that's in poor condition as well. There's a section of Oddly that may or may not be impacted by the Jersey American Water Line, so that may wait until the water line's completed. Hartford's certainly been on the list. So we're evaluating all those current needs and looking to supplement, to also address these North Newstead roads. I think we found some certainly more cost-effective ways to do that, working with the engineer, looking at some of the county co-op pricing and opportunities that we have there. The real question that I'm looking for tonight is some consensus or direction. You'll recall, and this also alludes back to my earlier comments about our escalating debt, and, you know, when I got here in 2012, I was concerned at the level of debt. We've made a concerted effort to sort of reverse the trend of that debt going up and committed to a policy of reducing our debt every year by at least a half million dollars, meaning we pay down at least a half million dollars more in principle than new debt that we authorize. I did provide you earlier with a spreadsheet. We're certainly well ahead of that pace year-to-date through this point in 2015. In 2014, we deliberately did not even approach that, in part because we had enough other appropriated funds with enough projects that, in terms of simply the personnel bandwidth to get those projects done, there wasn't a need for additional funding, and there was also some sort of held in reserve with the anticipation of the Village Hall bids coming in and not knowing what they would be, and having to build in some reserve in the event they came in even higher than what we got. So as a result, you know, through the four years, we are significantly ahead of pace on our paydown of a half million a year. The current recommendation in order to try and address, and again, in conjunction with the other streets that were already in the mix, but to add all or some of these North Newstead streets, and we will continue to work through the priorities, but the recommendation here is to add an additional total million dollars in funding, which equates to nine hundred and fifty thousand in borrowing this year to address these streets. And again, these are streets that if they're not done this year, they'll be done next year, so we're going to spend the money, but they are in such poor condition that to the point of getting dangerous. As I put in the spreadsheet, even if we do that, we still say on pace over the last four years ahead of our half million a year paydown. So without, you know, tonight's not for a specific pick-your-street, it's just really to let us know the pool of funding we would have available to sort of fine-tune and finalize the recommendations on the streets with an effort towards including some of these others that have gotten so poor so quickly, and to see if the board is comfortable with moving forward in that direction, and specifically, you know, again, recognizing that keeps us on pace with our overall debt reduction strategy. So, you know, that's that update, and I don't know if, again, not any binding vote, but I'm just looking for some direction, whether it's a straw poll or a vote, if there's a consensus to move forward in that direction.
I'm comfortable with going forward with those recommended road, but what I'd like to know is which ones, or where are we with, are we shovel-ready? When do we think that we can go to bid on the roads? When do you think those roads will be completed?
Well, and certainly, some of them involve in-house engineering and projects and bidding. Terrell, as I noted, has a DOT grant that has a deadline, so I know that is geared up and ready to go. I think Blanchard and Crest have been engineered, I believe Tolu's been fully engineered, I think Hartford is essentially fully engineered. Oddly, I'm not certain about. Oddly, again, is that's one, we got to see what's going to happen with the New Jersey American Water Line, and that they're scheduled to run later this summer, I think beginning around August, and whether that, you know, that's got to be completed before we redo the road, that may, you know, of necessity, kick that into next year's project. The North Newstead, one of the things we're able to do with the engineer, the Public Works Director, we met with representatives of Tilcon, which is probably the largest paving company in the state, or certainly in the north, northern New Jersey, they have the Morris County Co-op price. One of the benefits of that, there's also a cooperative purchasing contract for curb replacement. So by using those, we avoid the need to prepare full-blown bidding specs, go out to bid, drag out the process. It also controls the cost, you know exactly what you're getting into, it eliminates the bonding and bid bonding and some of the other costs associated with it that can drive the bid prices up. So, you know, once the dust settles, we pick where we want to go, those projects can all be done this year, and virtually almost every project, I think, in the mix can be done this year. The real question's going to be, you know, how much funding is available, how many can we do? I will also say this, additional opportunities may present themselves because historically, and I certainly prefer it, I'd rather our engineer be conservative in their estimating, but one of the reasons we've been able to build up as much road funding that we have now is so many projects have come in under estimate. So some of these numbers that are the engineer's estimate, certainly if history is any guide, there's a distinct likelihood they're going to come in lower than that, freeing up more money, allowing us to do more roads. So the specific, I think almost every road we've talked about can be done this year, and I think we will relatively quickly, if we have some direction that we know that's the total pool of money available, and we'll make every effort to make the right choices. And I would say that of all the streets we've mentioned, they'll all be done, if not this year, then next year. They're all way up in that top ten list, so the extent we can do as many as possible this year, that's the intent, to the extent other conditions, you know, put that off the Jersey American Water Line and Oddly, et cetera, then they'll certainly be, you know, first in the queue for next year.
Barry, I have a question regarding Upper Newstead from one of the Public Works discussions that I have been privy to. That challenge is different from all our other roads because it's one of the newer developments in South Orange, and it's my understanding, and Walter, as chair of the DPW, correct me if I'm not correct, it's my understanding that the real challenge is that the deficiencies that our road was built from the beginning, and that's been part of the delay. So if I understood you correctly, that's on the agenda to be addressed, and if that's so, is the underlying problem, meaning the original construction of that road, which was deficient, will that be addressed?
Yeah, certainly, that will be addressed. I think we're confident, again, having met, you know, and really studied this closely with the engineer, and then equally important, brought out the folks from Tilcon who do this for a living and have, you know, paved who knows how many thousands of miles of road every year. These roads were done with what's called a penetration method, which was an old, kind of a weird method that they came up in the 50s and 60s where they put down large stone and they coated with tar, and then they, that's sort of the base of the road. Many of our older roads are concrete base, it's a little more stable base, but the plan with a milling, a re-establishment of the base, and certainly soft areas will be excavated, put a new base and stabilize, and then with an overlay of sufficient thickness, we're confident that what we're going to get is a good solid road, a good solid base, new curbing, that's going to last us twenty-five, thirty years.
Get you back to the base, so you're going to, they're going to be putting in, Walter, a concrete base?
To your, no, not concrete, but to your point, one of the things which we do discuss in Public Works was that frankly, the inexpensive option, which we try to do as much as possible, is just putting down that micro-layer. And Tom Machetti was saying that that is just something that cannot be done any longer in that area, because the problem is really with the underlayers, and the freeze thaw just destroys that right away. So even if we were to micro-pave up there, it would be frankly a waste of money until you address the sub-layer, and that's what the mill and fill process is intended to do.
And I hope that that happens because they have been waiting for a very, very long time, and I think it's really important for us to communicate that we have a capital budget in a certain amount that is allocated every year for road infrastructure, and it's a million dollars, and a million dollars when it comes to addressing our roads, even for a municipality as small as ours, it's not a lot of money because it's expensive. And the determination on how, what roads are selected with our limited capital for infrastructure is based on the assessment by an engineer, and there are a couple of variables, what, you know, basically what is shovel-ready, what really rises to the top of the list, so that our residents understand that it's a real thought-out process based on our limited capital, and it's not arbitrary, and those who are long-suffering due to the original construction of the road, meaning Upper Newstead, these are things that we're trying to address, and hopefully that engineering problem will be addressed. And then going forward, the maintenance of that road in that area probably can be addressed on a more regular basis. So again, you're the, I deem you the subject expert in this area since you chair that committee.
I don't know if it's subject expert.
Just please let me know if I've articulated that correctly.
Yes, I mean, it's definitely a process that relies heavily upon the expertise of the village engineer, and we want it to, rather than being a system of complaint and who you know. Frankly, I think we should be removed from the process as far as that decision goes. And so, yes, it is, it is, it is an involved process as they try to assess that, because there's frankly, at this point, there's sort of a triage thing going on. What we are interested in doing is trying to spend the money wisely by getting the roads to a point where they can be maintained in a better process going forward, because in that particular area, you can't really do a little whitewash thing that's going to, that's going to help, it's just going to lead to more maintenance.
And I just think that we just need to do a better job of communicating what the resources are, what the process is, because roads are something that affect every resident, and there is a real reason, and I think we do a good job with our limited resources and things, and try to be fair in regards to the assessment of what is on the list for a particular year. And hopefully going forward, maybe we can come up, and maybe through your committee, with a better way, and a very simple way of clearly communicating repetitively on an ongoing basis on how we address the maintenance of our roads.
Is this your recommendation?
Yeah, I'm in the vote on this. I'm going to have to say somewhat begrudgingly, just because I know how hard Barry has been working on knocking down the debt in general, and how committed this board is to frankly keeping a hold on that, and so knowing how much work has been put into that, it is painful to say, but yeah, we got to spend some money, and this is an example of it, and infrastructure is one of those things, it doesn't go away unless you take care of it, and if you just let it sit there, it will just become more and more expensive, we say this over and over again. So I think this is one where we got to just step up and spend the money and not spend it again next year.
I'm in agreement as well. I don't view it from the public work standpoint, but I think that some of the roads that we've seen are a public safety hazard to the residents on some of these streets and for our emergency vehicles, and I think that in particular, this past winter being as awful as it was, really exacerbated the situation of the poor conditions of some of these roads, so I would be in favor of it as well.
Yeah, I had one additional question that I did want to ask. Do you think we have any eligibility for grants for any of this work?
Well, I mean, these, I guess two things. Certainly, some of them, Terrell, we already got a grant.
Right.
We have a grant, we just got awarded a grant that I was going to touch on later, but for Academy, so grant funding for road projects is difficult to come by. The only real sort of consistent reliable source is the Jersey Department of Transportation local aid grants. Essentially, every town gets one a year for somewhere between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They have a pretty well-established criteria for grading roads that relate to, you know, the traffic levels, public facilities. We had used one for Glenview that we recently did.
Schools.
But generally, if you have schools and public buildings, that gives you points and criterias, and that's where we've had to selectively, Terrell, because it's a sort of a thoroughfare cutting through. Academy, obviously, goes without saying, you go out that way, but those are really the only opportunities. And then from a timing perspective, even if grants were available by the time you apply, get it, get it, some of these roads can't wait that long, they're falling apart as we speak. But I'm not optimistic that our grants form anyway. So, you know, again, some of them, I would also add that I think we are, I have certainly encouraged, and I think we've now collectively come around to the assessment of, you know, where do we get the best value for our investment? Historically, I think there was more of a tendency, like if you're going to touch the road, just touch it once and be done with it forever, which equated to a complete reconstruction, which meant really literally ripping every single thing out down to the dirt. Well, that like triples the cost of doing the road, maybe it gets you, instead of twenty-five years, you get forty years, but now you're doing one-third of the roads, and, you know, I think from a perspective and from a resident, and quite frankly, even if you do the mill, overlay, profile, new curbs, et cetera, and if you maintain it properly and you micro-surface it if cracks start to appear, because obviously cracks lead to water, lead to, you know, freeze thaw, freeze thaw, expansion, bigger cracks, if you maintain it properly, then even when you hit that twenty, twenty-five, thirty-year mark, you're still back to just having to mill and overlay, which is again, is always the less expensive option. And in the scheme of things, given the widespread deficient condition of our roads, it's certainly my opinion that the much better use of our money is to do more roads, and again, this is not the sort of micro-pave, just slap a little, almost coat of paint on top of it, but actually to redo the roads in a good, solid, engineered way where you can do three times as many roads, you know, and even on the list I gave you, if you just look at how many rows and how many linear feet you're doing for that price versus some of the full-blown reconstructions, it kind of speaks for itself. But so that is certainly the recommendation, and that's, I think, the new direction we're heading in.
Were there any major concerns? I mean, it sounded like folks were on board, but just to be clear.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the question about, normally we give notice to PSE and G and the other utilities to make, because it's going to be done on short notice, usually we give six months at least. we give six months at least, that we have to notify PSE&amp;G by the way if they want to do any work. And if you notice, PSE&amp;G seems to be on a mission to destroy every street in town.
Yeah, as soon as we finish paving, if they want to go open it up.
But one of the, one of the, one of the streets that they did a lot of work on last year was Church Street, and they pretty much completely destroyed that street from Third Street to South Orange Avenue. They're supposed to come back and repave, so if you could come back, please leave job to them and ask them if they just want to give us the money and let us do it, or if they're going to do it, because it's gotten pretty bad. And I know there's also stretches of other roads that have been totally destroyed by them.
Yeah, no, and that's actually something that I've spoken about with the engineer in some of these, where they have done so much work, whether it's better just ask them to make a financial contribution, come up with an amount that it would cost them to do it, because they don't seem to do a very good job repairing it. Even if they do, it's very patchwork, and then the patches sink. And instead, whether, you know, particularly if it's a road that the condition is such that we anticipate we're going to redo it soon enough anyway, I think the better move is to ask them to, you know, just cut us check. Instead of you doing it, we'll do it and do it right and be done with it. So that's certainly something we're exploring.
And you know what, it seems like on all the major roads that I cross, that that happens soon as it's paved, they do it, it just seems like a no-brainer. Is there some sort of way to coordinate their infrastructure maintenance program?
Yeah, we certainly, you know, obviously, you can't, you can't address a leak, obviously, in advance, because they wouldn't know about it. But by and large, we certainly give them notice, we're going to do these roads. If you're going to do any new gas connections, any new services, please get out there and do it before. One of the things we might consider, and I've certainly had it in other towns where I've worked, and I'm aware of Morris County had it, is imposing a moratorium barring a public safety issue, that, you know, once we redo a new road, you can't open it just for business purposes for a certain period of time. And that's something we may want to consider. Obviously, if there's a leak and they have to address, they have to address it, but that's sort of unforeseen.
Just one other item that I think we knew would need to address with the county, and that's the condition of Wyoming Avenue and Scotland Road. Either we can write a resolution or some statement, the road is just in horrible shape. Roads, plural.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so generally, we're
Yes.
On board, moving forward on the assumption that's our working capital pool.
Yes.
One quickly, in addition to the deadline that we mentioned extending for Village Hall, we had received proposals for the website, and we are, we have extended that deadline. It's not, doesn't require the formality of a resolution, because it was below the bid threshold, and it was a more informal RFP. But we have additional follow-up meetings scheduled with some of the vendors in the coming week or two, and anticipate to move on that. I had listed just grants update, one of them, I mentioned, we recently received news, we got another grant for Academy Street, again, NJDOT Local Aid, it was $225,000. We had previously, I think, announced that we received the Million Dollar River Greenway. We're presently trying to coordinate a ceremony associated with that grant, this sort of big check presentation, looking at May 14th, which coincidentally is National Bike to Work Day. So that was thought to be an appropriate day for recognizing this grant for the pedestrian Bike to Work Day.
I just want to say, every day is Bike to Work Day.
What's that?
I'm just saying, every day is Bike to Work Day.
It is for you, who appeared in his bike helmet tonight, kudos. So I had more details, but I think we're looking at the afternoon of May 14th, so if people can hold that date. And finally, on the budget projection, we had come a long way, we had our last workshop, in part, which is unusual for me, and I need to try and get used to it, but because of our form of government, where we have municipal elections and new governing bodies come in in May, you can't start the process with one governing body and finish with another. So if you don't have it all done and wrapped up by like April, you can't even start. So we're kind of on hold, but generally, you know, with respect to the items that we discussed, the workshop, the numbers still look good. We're still going to clearly be under 2% all-in, no exemptions, no cap exceptions. If we applied cap exceptions for pension increases and other things, we'd be closer to the 1% or even below 1%. But for anyone out there wondering kind of what happened to it, that's the reality of it, we have to now hold it till we get a new governing body in. But we will be, I think, teed up to move on that aggressively, once the governing body is, you know, once we have the reorganization and technically have a new governing body. But again, looks, looks, looks good. It'll be, you know, you know, we're as always, working to minimize the impact on taxpayers, and I'm comfortable we can do it again this year. So one other, and just a side note, and it may come up if there's more comments, but while we were talking, or where other people were talking, I did look up, and just for anyone in the viewing audience or in the audience, when I referenced earlier that we had a thing on the books, it actually goes back to 1992. It's found in, and it's on the, on the website, Article 1, Property Tax Exemption, Section 144-1, and goes on. And it was, again, this short-term tax abatement specifically refers to legislators, Legislature of the State of New Jersey permitting municipalities to grant for periods of five years exemptions from taxation in areas in need of rehabilitation, proven to be effective in promoting construction, rehabilitation of residential and commercial structures in areas threatened with economic and social decline. So it was essentially the same scheme. So under the LHRL, you make the designation of rehabilitation, it is under this exact same statutory scheme or structure that you grant the short-term abatement. So point is, this has been on the books since 1992, and there hasn't been, you know, to my knowledge, any impact of that on property values or, you know, mass rezoning of everything in town. So, you know, certainly encourage residents to look, read that, again, Section 144-1, which was again, on the books since 1992. And that was all I had.
And that did sunset, correct? I believe that Mr. Baumann advised of that.
Well, yeah, it's supposed to be redone every 10 years, and it was redone a couple of times, it was redone in 2002, and then again in 2000, well, in 2002, which took it through 2012. And that was when we started this, you know, we're looking at these other options, and rather than, I mean, this is effectively renewing it, you know, as we proceed along the way.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Rothen?
Yes, week before last, our consultants, HDR, brought in a team to do the extensive onsite investigation of our water system. And their chore is to do a system condition study and provide us with a 10-year capital plan for the water system. They finished all of the onsite work, with the exception of some confined space examinations, which they're going to be doing shortly with the assists of our fire department, and we hope in the next couple of weeks that we will have those reports from HDR. We are going to be asking them, when they've finished that study, to begin to do some spec writing on capital work that has to be done with regard to some of the above-ground assets that we have. And in order to be able to begin to pay for that, we have proposed to East Orange Water Commission that we amend our contract with them for the last two years, so that we have control of the capital fund that they're supposed to provide. They're supposed to be giving us $200,000 a year, 220 if Trustee Levinson has his way. And I have drafted an amendment of that contract, which would give us control of those capital funds. The East Orange Water Commission Board has approved in concept that revision to the contract, and I'm simply waiting now, I'm pressing now for the attorneys, for East Orange Water to comment on my amendment to the contract, so we will in fact have control of those funds. We have now gone out with the RFP for the operations and maintenance of the system. We want to do that in two phases, so that we can bring on a new operator early enough so that they can participate with New Jersey American in the design and testing of the new interconnection, so that when we make the transition, that everything will go smoothly. We're encouraged, because there are five pretty substantial companies that have expressed interest and now have the RFP, and we've begun to get some questions from them. On the 7th of May, we're going to be hosting for all these interested parties, a tour of the water system and a question and answer session, and we expect to be receiving proposals on June the 4th. That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
I have some comments.
This Saturday, I noticed that the East Orange Water, excuse me, New Jersey American, was out surveying from Walton, locating where the pipes will be going. And I marked in the Walton area, down in the DPW area where the pump house will go, I've marked the spot, so if the residents in the area want to take a look, they can see where the proposed location would be. And lastly, we have now negotiated with East Orange Water that they will accept our SO Connect complaints, and they will receive them as well as respond to the status in closing out of those requests. So this is now another vendor, PSE&amp;G being the first, now East Orange Water will be using it.
Do we have any confidence whatsoever that they'll actually respond to the request?
Yes.
Because they're not responding to the telephone calls, or the emails, or the constant complaints that they get from our residents about the billing. I'm totally uninspired that they're signing up for SO Connect to be responsive, because they've proven that they are very unresponsive and unreliable.
I think they will respond to SO Connect, because we have a direct line with the new director that they have there, and he's accepted the responsibility.
Yeah, and I think additionally, the benefit of doing it this way is, in addition to them getting them, we're going to get them. So we can go in, we'll know every single one that was sent to them.
Correct.
There will be accountability, we'll know the day it was sent, we'll have the ability to follow up and, you know, because now it's a resident calls, and I may hear after they've been trying for two months that nobody's responding, where we'll know immediately.
We normally get it on the tail end, after people get so frustrated by it.
Jerked around for too long. Exactly. So now we'll know from day one that this went into them, and be able to, you know, as best we can, hold them accountable.
How, are we going to get that on the website?
Yes, yes.
To just make sure people are aware to use that?
Yep. It will be on the website as well as on your smartphone application.
And then can we also make sure that that's in the gaslight? Because a lot of people use that like a bible, the gaslight.
Sure. Adam can do that.
Okay. Trustee Clark?
Yes, apologies for not getting my notes in in time. In terms of the Public Works and Infrastructure Meeting, Barry basically paraphrased it, the discussion of roads, that's the discussion of roads. So move on to other things. CCR, just one note that I want to make folks aware of, they are sponsoring the next Community Conversation on Race, and that will be Wednesday, May the 13th, at 7:30 PM. And that will be at Congregation Bethel at 222 Irvington Avenue, South Orange, New Jersey. And it will feature professional Professor Michael Jeffries, who happens to be, well, now he's a Wellesley professor, but he was Columbia High School graduate, and he will lead participants through a discussion on microaggression, subtle bias, and unintentional bias. Quickly, on the Energy Policy Committee, I'm psyched, because they are working on developing a, some content for the South by South Orange event, and new chair is energetic, it's cool. Environmental Commission, did I mention River Day? I'm going to do that. May 3rd, just saying it again. 11 to 4, it's a duck pond. So River Day, River Day, River Day. But also, I just wanted to follow up on the free tree seedlings, which the Environmental Commission really pitched in on pretty quickly, and thank you also to the village president for writing the letter. It made it all happen.
The power of the pen.
Yes. No, that was, that was kind of a fun event. I almost lost my voice by the end of the day, but a lot of people turned out and were really enthusiastic, and we were able to give away 92 trees. We discovered that dogwoods are far more popular than oak trees. And hopefully, there will be a new generation of about 100 trees that, you know, fingers crossed, they all take, and, you know, 30 years from now, they're big trees. So that's that.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Rosner?
Yeah, just a couple of brief updates. Mary Lawn, we had our monthly meeting with some of the local stakeholders to go over the different plans. Unfortunately, Mary Lawn themselves, the sisters of charity who own the property, who refused to come or participate in any of the meetings, so it's really sort of an end road for us. We're going to decide if we want to change the zoning at that property to anything else, or if we're going to keep it the same. And at this point, and us, Mary Lawn, has changed their position and willing to come to the table to discuss potential options. Right now, they have no proposals coming to the village at this point, nothing formal, just a lot of rumors. And we'll leave the rumors out there until we know more. And the same for Orange Lawn, we've had some updates with them. They presented a concept plan, which is consistent with the zoning for the area. They've also, we've been talking to both the club members, to the club, and to some of the local residents, and looking to try and reach a compromise that will help keep the club sustained and to, and get the money and build something less than what was originally proposed. And that's where we stand now. Also, if Walter didn't mention it, River Day is coming up on Sunday.
Thank you, Mark.
I have a question.
Is it about River Day? It's the only question.
Is River Day on Sunday?
As a matter of fact.
And what time?
11:00 AM in the morning, till 4:00.
And what is the day about? Because the title's very unclear. All right, it's time I like to open the meeting up for public comment periods about River Day or anything else. So if you'd like to, please come on. Thank you for being patient.
Amy Dawn returning to the microphone, and I've worked many River Days with Boy Scouts, retrieved many items, it's a fabulous day, and I thank you for continuing that effort. I just wanted to finish my statement and add a few other comments. As I was saying, as people are researching South Orange and thinking about moving here, they will Google, what is rehabilitation? And the first item of those criteria is, a significant portion of the structures there in are a deteriorated or substandard condition. Yes, there are others that say 50% of the housing is over whatever age, and yes, there's others about the sewers, but that is the first one they're going to read, and that's going to turn them around. So I do believe this will stigmatize the village. And I would also like to add that there are other aspects of the Smart Growth Plan. I sat on that committee for more than one year, and rehabilitation zones were not a part of that plan, at least not village-wide ones. And there was recommendations that the village adopt, or review the planning and zoning ordinances for bulk flat requirements, so that we can help to prevent McMansions, and that has not yet taken place. Other zoning laws should be reviewed, and I think that you should take a closer look through the Smart Growth Plan and make sure that you are following those things. Also, a recommendation of the committee which studied historic preservation was that you could determine that we are a certified local government, and if we move forward with the master plan element for the Historic Preservation Commission, that is a very important avenue for getting grants, et cetera. Also, the Historic Property Reinvestment Act, I urge you as local legislators to advocate for that, that has continually come up for vote in the state, and that's another way for property owners of residences to get tax abatements from the state. So in summary, designate the village as a whole as a rehabilitation zone is a broad brush stroke, and I'd like to say that I made that statement first. And that paints a poor picture of South Orange and is a dangerous precedent. South Orange should not be the guinea pig for a townwide rehab zone, and I urge you to take measured steps, allow the regular laws of zoning and planning, to take governance over the vast majority of the village, and designate only the areas of South Orange that would benefit from rehabilitation. On a separate note, I just wanted to add that although Mr. Lewis said that we inherited deferred maintenance in regard to the Baird Center and Village Hall, we also inherited the responsibility to preserve those buildings. And they should remain public buildings. I want to thank you for your time, and I urge you to move forward with preservation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time? Okay, seeing as there are no more public comments, I'll close the public. Okay, seeing as there are no more public comments, I'll close the public comment period. We did address, I think, some of the bulk of the concerns that were just brought up before, but is there anything that anybody wanted to add at this point?
I think we can also just have the conversation again in planning and zoning. I see what, I think we're all moving towards the same goals, because the stated goals are essentially the goals that we have, is a focus on the commercial corridors. And so the designation alone doesn't actually do anything without an enacting ordinance or a plan. And so whatever gets us to the place where we're able to offer the financial incentives that we're, we're trying to accomplish, you know, I'm pretty flexible with that, however we can achieve that. But ultimately, I would prefer that we don't do several studies all over the town, if we can avoid that. So maybe we just revisit with the planner and see what suggestions she might have, based on some of the concerns. And also for Ms. Dawn, I just wanted to read this, because I got a notification, and I think you might have referenced it, but I, I didn't catch it. The save the New Jersey Historic Trust funding, the hearings are, just, I'll read it, please attend an upcoming Department Budget hearing, the Assembly Budget Committee will be hearing this on the 27th, which was today, and the next one is the 29th at 10:00 AM. And this is about funding from the state to support historic preservation in many of municipalities. So anybody interested, you know, it'd be great to have folks from South Orange attend. That's it.
Thank you. And I'll just add maybe one other comment, which is related, but, but on a slightly different note, which is that, like with a lot of these things that have even just come up tonight in this short meeting, there are very limited tools at our disposal and very strict requirements about how we go about things, that are things the state sets. It's easy to say, oh, well, it's not because of us, it's because of some other government agency, but that's certainly the truth, and it's certainly something that, you know, has been eye-opening for me over the last couple of years, is all these different things that we want to do, the amount of time that we spend organizing and structuring ourselves to be compliant with things at the state level that don't necessarily make sense on our level down here, actually going out and doing the things, it's really, really quite frustrating. So, you know, part of this is that the tools that we have at our disposal, this rehab plan is one of them. And, and maybe this is a conversation that we can also think about having. We've always been kind of an advocacy governing board on a handful of different issues, and this is maybe one of the other issues that we could kind of put on our docket of things that I don't, I don't imagine there's going to be much movement from state legislature about it, but it's certainly one of many items that I think all of us get frustrated about, like the public comment issues, or like any of these other things, where it's really guidance that we've been given about how we're supposed to do something, say, well, here are your options, now pick which one is best, and we're like, well, each one of these has some major drawback that would impact our ability at doing this. So, you know, we work within, you know, I would, I would call it a broken system for sure, and I'd like to think that we do, you know, as best of a job as possible, working within those kind of frameworks to try and work towards these goals, which I imagine are fairly similar, or at least overlapping in a bunch of regards for a lot of people. So I just wanted to make sure to add that. I know it's not specific to the kind of question, but it is related to the overall framework that we have to operate in, or that we have the ability to operate in with these sorts of things. Was there any?
Yes.
Yes.
Just one other point, she, Amy mentioned a number of items that are still outstanding, which may be ordinance-related that we still should complete.
Well, the frustrating part, I think, at least from reading everything a few times, is that we have to complete the comprehensive master plan. That is the end-all, be-all, where our biggest deficiencies are, are, our zoning ordinances aren't consistent with what has come out of the Smart Growth Plan. You know, in fact, had the recommendations from the Smart Growth Plan been done, Orange Lawn right now would not be a planned residential cluster B, it would be an RA 100 zone. So we have a lot of outstanding items that have happened over the years that haven't been formally adopted and incorporated into our land use chapter of our code. And so this is going to be the year, right, Trustee Rosner?
This is it.
This is it. Master plan or bust. So, yeah, point, point received.
Is it now our budget for this year?
Yes, Barry.
Yes.
All right, well, apparently that beep means it's the end of the meeting.
I'm out of time again.
Thanks for joining us, folks. I don't know what that was. Anyway, unless there's anything else, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
River Day.
All right, move by Trustee Collins, second by Trustee Levinson, all in favor? Any opposed? Good night.